This is the informal meeting for July 18, 2017. Meeting minutes, copies of draft meeting minutes are for June 20th have been provided to council members and have also been posted on the city website. Committee reports are on the old man's desk. There is a communication from, it could happen to you. It's a fact sheet that was submitted by council member Garika and it's part of the part of the resolution number four which will be coming up. It's all related to that. Resolutions, appointing commissioners at the mayor with an introduction and a second please. Alexis Warren. Next resolution is accepting donations in the amount of $640 for the annual fishing derby. May I have an introduction and a second please? Tiffany Corso. The third resolution is adopting an energy benchmarking policy for certain municipal buildings within the city of Hudson. Michael, would you like to say something about this?
Yeah. As part of the state's effort to encourage municipalities to be more energy efficient, they've included this action as part of their Clean Energy Community Program. And they are encouraging the municipalities and counties to create a benchmark, which is already in now, and then to have a look at that same number every year so that you can track your progress if any, or see if there's anything else that you can do. So it's a form of record keeping to say, this is the status of the city with this particular index, and here's where we are with your letter, two years, three years, et cetera. So the process is pretty easy. It just means looking at the city's electric and gas records and inputting them into a system that the EPA maintains that is set up to translate what you put into it into a record for the building. And once that's done, it just requires, you know, putting it in again a year from now so that you have a record of that sort of stuff. So the initial work has been done already. All of the data has been collected. It's all been input into the EPA portfolio manager. And in order for us to get credit for having done it, we need to pass a resolution saying, yes, we are intending to do it and intending to look at it every year.
Why do we want credit?
We want credit because it's part of a larger system that I'll present in a moment to the council of the Clean Energy Communities Program that sets us up for up to $50,000 in grant money that will allow us to do other energy-saving, money-saving measures on other municipal buildings here in the city. So it's in part kind of good practice, but it's also setting, it's a means to an end where we can accomplish some other objectives as we go down the road. Other questions about that?
Why is there a blank space in this resolution?
Ah.
The last paragraph.
Yes, yes. It's intended that the mayor will designate somebody to keep track of us, to administer it all the time. So that's to be killed in.
Okay. And we are to vote for this without knowing who, or we're just?
Well, you give the responsibility to the administration. And who is a year from now, two years from now, we set the stage for somebody to keep track of us. It's a minor administrative task that could have, you know, useful results. So whether it's assigned to the city clerk, or the building inspector, or the mayor's assistant, you know, I'd be happy to pick up on it myself. I put in the data already to set us up where we are now. So it's easy to do. So that's the, that's up to the mayor to do. I don't want to specify.
Greg?
Yes, Michael? If this is part of a bigger presentation for you, could we go to the bigger presentation?
Yes, of course. I mean, this was on the agenda as an individual item, but I didn't want to.
I mean, if you want to also talk about the solar permit.
I can walk into that now.
Okay.
And the other materials that I sent in, which I'm not seeing in our stuff now.
It's in the chapter. It's the back page, way back page.
No, I had a 10-page presentation content that was in here that I'm not seeing that I sent in to Tracy.
Well, this was the one that we talked about this afternoon, correct?
Right, but the, that other resolution is what we talked about. But what I sent Tracy for inclusion in the materials today was a whole presentation on the rest of the program.
Okay. If you'd like to talk about it, let's talk about it anyway, and then we'll complete the set when we meet next week. Can we have something else before next meeting?
Well, yes, of course. So, the Clean Energy Communities Program is being introduced to communities here in New York State as a way to comply with New York State's general initiative of making the state more energy efficient and encouraging the use of alternative energy. So towards that end, the state created a fund that would support actions that the cities might take that are in 10 different categories. The categories or the actions that they say are the 10 high-impact actions include benchmarking policy, among other things. It also includes a measure that supports simplification of the building permits that solar panel installers have to use when they apply for a building permit on a building for installation so that it's more directly applied to the mechanism of a solar panel rather than, you know, a back porch or whatever else one gets a building permit for. And for the implementation of, what's the other thing? The unified solar energy benchmarking.
Electric car.
The electric car, charging stations. So the general idea is that if you, in your community, were able to put in place four of these actions, well, one of the other ones, the Energize New York Program for financing of commercial installations of energy efficiency or alternative energy of some sort. So we've already done the Energize New York Program. That's already in place. We already have financing available for commercial property owners for that sort of thing. The benchmarking is essentially already done. We just need to officialize it. And then the solar permitting is something that also the state has provided us with a template that says, well, here's the way to lay out a form so that somebody can apply and not, you know, take a whole lot of our building inspector's time to do so, to correlate what's needed on the form. So all of that, those, the four actions that we could take together sets us up for a grant of about $50,000.
What does Craig say?
Craig has, oh, one of the others that's important is training on how to do, how to comply and force the building applications that trigger the need for a compliance with the Energy Efficiency Code, which has recently been introduced at the state level. Craig and I had a conversation about this the other day, and he expressed consternation that he didn't know how to enforce that part of the code. And none of the building inspectors that he calls on for advice knew as well. So the state has arranged for a consultant to work with the building inspectors to help them understand how to enforce that part of the code.
He doesn't know how to permit a solar installation in the city?
That's not the question at hand.
What is the question again? I thought we were talking about solar panel installation.
No, I wasn't just now.
Or when I asked a question.
You didn't ask a question of that specificity. You said, what does Craig think?
Well, in the context of what you were discussing.
Well, I'm discussing right now several different things. So we need to be clear.
In the context of what you were discussing when I asked a question?
What I'm describing right now is another aspect of the program which has to do with enforcing the Energy Efficiency Code, which is now part of the official building code of New York State. So let me deal with that. The response from Craig was that he is really in need of support in that regard, that that's something he feels inadequate to enforce. And so this particular program, as part of the system, is set up to coach essentially the building inspectors with a personal visit, a couple of inspections, and being essentially on call forever after in case he has a question about it. So the question, if it was, if we go back to the solar panel installation, Craig is by now familiar with how it goes, and as are many of the building inspectors in the state of New York. But the form on which you apply for a building code is set up for changes in the structure of a building. So it's asking questions about the wiring and the square footage and the cost and so forth. And it doesn't say anything about, well, how many panels are there, and how's the inverter going to work, and where's the wiring going to go, and things like that that are quite specific to that technology. So over the past several years, in response to questions from the industry and from the building inspectors, the state put an effort in to create a kind of a standardized template which includes all of the elements which are specific to the solar panel installation and leaves out the stuff that's extraneous. So the building inspector has less translation work to do about, well, what is included in this and where does it fit and so forth, because it's already, it's already on the document. It's all provided for, there's a space for everything. So it's specifically attuned to the needs of that sort of installation. So the state is encouraging the adoption of the sort of uniform solar code, as they refer to it, with a grant of $2,500, which is intended to cover any administrative costs that might be incurred in doing a change in the printing of the code and forms and so forth.
Any other questions? Going back to the resolution for energy benchmarking, can I have an introduction in a second? Michael? Alexis? The next resolution is calling on New York State legislature to pass legislation creating a state commission on prosecutorial misconduct. May I have an introduction? Tiffany Corso. Tiffany, would you like to introduce our guest?
Yes, Bill Bastic is here on behalf of the organization. It could happen to you and has been working on this bill for several years. And being that New York State is the number one in prosecutorial misconduct and wrongful convictions, everyone in the profession has an accountability to their profession minus prosecutors. And this bill will have accountability for prosecutors.
Thank you, Tiffany. And Tiffany is a board member of It Could Happen To You and a very hard-working member. And I just want to thank her for introducing this bill. I meant this as a resolution. It could happen to you as a statewide coalition from Westchester to the Mid-Hudson to Buffalo and Niagara Falls. This bill, by the way, is labeled the Commission on Prosecutorial Conduct, not misconduct. And we intentionally label it that way because we don't want to assume that there's misconduct amongst prosecutors. The bill was first introduced in the state legislature in 2015 by Senator John D. Francisco and Assemblyman Nick Perry. It currently has 64 assembly sponsors. That's an increase of 22 assembly sponsors from the previous session, 2016 session. The bill was moved to the calendar of the assembly this past session and also moved to Senate Finance for the third year in a row. Actually, last year it was moved out of Senate Finance and to Senate, to the Senate floor. To be honest with you, there's been a game of chicken being played here in terms of who's going to stand up to the DA's and the prosecutors first, whether it's going to be the Senate or the assembly, and actually put this bill in place. As the councilwoman mentioned, New York State is second in the nation in wrongful convictions, only to Texas. Okay? We have on record 224 wrongful convictions. We also have on record 37 cases of prosecutorial misconduct just in the past three years. Now, what a misconduct case is, just so you know very briefly, it's when a defense lawyer appeals a case based upon misconduct by the prosecutor. And that can involve withholding evidence, violating the defendant's right to evidence, which is known as Brady, misleading the jury in an opening or closing statement, or at times lying to the jury. The defense attorney appeals those to an appellate judge, and the appellate judge makes a determination as to whether or not there was misconduct and the individual could have been wrongfully prosecuted. That is on the increase in New York State. It's not on the decrease, as the prosecutors have claimed. These 37 cases, every time there's a reversal, that means there has to be a new trial. Who pays for the new trial? The taxpayers, just as the taxpayers pay millions and millions of dollars for wrongful conviction settlements. It could happen to you, did a study of just 11 cases out of 100 recent cases, a cost study. Those 11 cases, various counties across the state, cost county and state taxpayers close to $20 million, just those 11 cases. So in addition to the fact, the real chilling impact of wrongful prosecutions and wrongful convictions is that the true perpetrators left on the street to go out and commit another murder, or another rape, or another victim-related felony. And we have people on our board, Tiffany's met them, wrongfully prosecuted individuals who walk the halls with us and tell these horror stories, these chilling stories. So to address this, we've, what's sitting before the legislature now is a bill that parallels the 40-year-old Commission on Judicial Conduct. This commission's been in place for 40 years. It's been very, very effective. The record shows that. Because 40 years ago, when it was established, there were reams of cases relating to judicial conduct. That caseload has gone down year in year after year. That's because there's been a deterrent effect, just knowing that the commission is there as an oversight, and that people have a place to go. Right now, nobody's got a place to go. And St. Lawrence County, the St. Lawrence County Legislature asked twice for the governor to remove the St., their own DA, because she had violated so many standards. They don't have a commission to go to.
Can't they go to the bar?
The bar does not deal with their own brethren, okay? The bar really has no system, okay?
The Commission on, or the professional standards?
The Commission on Professional Standards does not take cases from the outside, okay? They only review cases from their own membership. If you're a defense lawyer, you're very hesitant to go and try and slap a prosecutor on the hand, and because 90% of criminal cases are plea bargained. And I can tell you firsthand, in my own case, I was wrongfully prosecuted for raping a 16-year-old girl in a shut-off Rochester yacht club. I was a former town councilman, a former Monroe County Legislature. They had a very high premium on my head, because that's how prosecutors become congressmen and federal court judges, okay? I won my case, cost me $150,000 in a second mortgage that we're still paying for. My reputation is still destroyed. And this happens a lot. There's a lot of people who put it behind them, but we're not necessarily wrongfully convicted, but wrongfully prosecuted. And we know of individuals because we try to recruit them for our speakers bureau. They move out of town. They move out of the country because their name, their family has been spared. So in, just in my particular case, for example, I had a fairly good defense lawyer, okay? And I had to get a fairly good defense lawyer and take out a second mortgage. And after my acquittal, this defense attorney had won eight straight cases, getting away with a lot of crap. By the way, that, he did not allow her to get away with, such as withholding evidence, withholding diary entries, which this girl predicted the date and time that I was going to rape her, psychiatric medical evidence. He had another case with her, right after mine. And I ran into John downtown and I said, she said, I can't believe, Christie, I got a case where she's not returning my calls. She's still upset from our case. I said, why don't you report her to the bar or the grievance committee? He said, first of all, they do nothing. Secondly, it's not going to do any good, it's just going to get her mad. So the commission is a confidential place for defense lawyers to go to. And bear in mind, not all prosecutors are bad. Most prosecutors are probably good prosecutors. But there tend to be, as in every profession, serial violators. People are serial violators and filing their taxes. But rest be assured, if you get audited once by the IRS, you can be very, very careful in the future. The same with this, okay? And my prosecutor, by the way, had a reputation with the DA's office of using every trick in the book. People have no place to go. In Rensselaer County, the Rensselaer County DA is under the investigation of the state attorney general's office right now for a killing by a police officer. And Tiffany's telling me I got to speed up, and that's what she does very good with me. That's why she's on the board. But in this particular case, it involved a police officer shooting a civilian and killing that civilian. The AG's office decided to exercise the executive authority that was granted by the governor and asked the DA, Amidoli, who's in Rensselaer County, not to take any action until he began to look into the case. What did the DA do? He ignored the attorney general, and he did something that you'll probably never even hear about law and order. He granted the police officer the opportunity to go before the grand jury and granted him immunity. Yeah. Yes. An outrageously insane action, okay? The DA had the nerve to take the AG to court on it. So that's the culture. That's the culture of the prosecutor. They want no consequences. They live in a world in which they are in charge of creating consequences for those who break the rules. But yet, when they break their own rules, there are no consequences. A lot of people pay. Questions?
Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
And climate smart communities could prove.
And where are we at right now? The 2412B and 5285A, are they, they are still in the phase of process?
They will be, they will go back through the committee process next legislative session.
They'll be reintroduced?
Well, no, they, they don't have to be reintroduced. They will be.
Carried forward after the recess.
Yeah, yeah. So they've gone through, for the past two years, they have been virtually unanimously supported within the committee process. The committee votes alone are 52 yea and 13 nay. And these are conservatives, Republicans, I mean, the assembly rules vote was 30, nothing.
Is there a particular obstacle to be overcome in terms of moving this to completion?
The DA's are probably some of the most powerful people in Albany, okay? Two years ago, not this past year, when it came to the calendar of the assembly, the DA's targeted the Queens and the Westchester County delegations. We since learned that some of the, two Queens Assembly people came off the bill because their relatives in the DA's office called them and asked them to do it, okay? One prominent assembly member, not from Queens, but from another area, his son worked, his son worked for the Queens DA's office. The last week of session, he actually picked up the phone and said, Dad. Basically, he was feeling pressured by his boss. The Queens DA's office is the worst in the state, so.
Imagine the district attorney's offices object to this? The district attorney's offices object to this?
They are the only organization that we've asked for a memo of support from that objects to it.
Is there justification for the objection?
Well, they raised, every time we attempt to address one of their objections, they come up with a new neurotic objection. For example, they cite the grievance committees. And there are, there's these grievance committees in place that have been in place for about 30 years. And these are with the appellate judicial system. The grievance committees take complaints from the public and from lawyers and from clients about, about potentially illegal lawyer activity. Problem with the grievance committees is that they focus on civil lawyers. Lawyers. Lawyers in the private sector who decide that, you know, around Christmas time, I'm short of money, so I'm gonna take some money from the estate that I'm holding. Stealing from clients, okay? Tax lawyers who cheat, real estate lawyers who try and get, make themselves part of a deal. You know, criminal activity. They don't deal with prosecutorial misconduct. The DA's claim that they do. We filed FOILs. We've asked for information. There is no evidence whatsoever. Two years ago, Senator John D. Francisco and the DA's Association had a very heated argument. And the DA's claim that the grievance committees are working effectively. And Senator D. Francisco, I'm sure you all know, is, you know, he's our vice chairman of Senate. He's a pretty smart guy. Said, "Well, could you give us some examples?" And DA's Association leadership said, "Sure." And the senator said, "One can give us a list." This was first week in June 2015. And the DA said, "We'll be back with you within a week. We'll have a list for you." To this date, there is no list. And Senator Flanagan and Senator D. Francisco last fall sent a follow-up letter asking for the list. DA's never bothered to respond. New York State Association of Criminal Offense Lawyers filed a complaint on one of the most outrageous cases of prosecutorial misconduct in Queens. This occurred last July 2016. A woman was murdered. She was pregnant. It was essentially a double murder. The judge reversed the case because the prosecutor, a seasoned thirty-year prosecutor, by the way, not a rookie like the DA's claim, based on pervasive prosecutorial misconduct. In one instance, the prosecutor lied about what the medical examiner said. When that prosecutor was asked by the New York Law Journal what his reaction was, he said, "That was my, one of my better closings, I'm very surprised." That's on record. That's the culture of the DA's.
Thank you. Anybody else, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and the last resolution now on the table is the Unified Solo Permit, but without the backup of it. We'll, we'll get the rest of that as part of the package for next week. The one last thing we have on the agenda for tonight is Duke is here to discuss the CBBG grant application. There's a handout on your table there, and he's going to talk about the two, three grants, two applications.
Sheena couldn't join us this evening. Sheena Salvino from Hudson Development Corporation and I typically work on these applications together. She couldn't make it this evening, so I'm here to advise the council with respect to this round of funding and consolidated funding application. Actually, we were recommending, and we knew we would be doing this from the beginning, we would be taking some, some of the select projects that were submitted as part of the Downtown Revitalization Initiative and using them as, as the basis of our grant applications going forward. That's because a lot of time and money was spent on really developing projects that will certainly make for a stronger application going forward. Both, both of the applications that we are advising really come from the Environmental Protection Fund. One under New York State Department of State LWRP, local waterfront planning, and the other under Office of Parks and Recreation. So the two projects, as we've outlined there, one is for the Americans Disability Act compliant access to Promenade Hill Park. Now, we've, we've submitted applications in the past regarding this. The city has, has really made a, an effort to, to fund handicap accessibility to the park. Just recently, for the Downtown Revitalization Initiative, a new cost study was done and some, and some new plans formulated. So that's why we think we have a good application going forward there. And that would be the basis of that foundation, excuse me, application. The, the other one, the LWRP...
Quick question over there. Is that outside of the ramp that we've already proposed? We've already spent, we've already put aside $120,000 for?
Yes.
So this is beyond that?
Twenty million dollars.
I'm sorry?
So it'd be a total of almost a quarter million dollars.
So we currently have $120,000, which I, is that correct?
We have $120,000 on the side, and nothing has been done yet.
So in that, the new estimate of that is close to the $175,000.
I'm trying to establish a final amount, because the last that we've worked on was a committee that was created with the mayor. The amount indicated to $120,000 net worth with the materials that was chosen. Since then, there's been on and off conversations with Rob Perry, the mayor, and other committee members that was a part of it. And I've been hearing around this price of $175,000, so I'm shocked to hear that this is outside of it.
That's what I, the kind of figure I've heard kicked around, $175,000 as well. So this is up and beyond that, and this does what for the park?
That's a new, a new estimate that was, that was used for the consolidated funding application. Someone was hired to do that?
But what does it do? We just, we're building a new ramp for ADA access to the top promenade.
You already committed to doing that?
Yes. For $175,000 approximately.
Right, well, we don't have the money.
We would say funding.
$120,000 is only allocated.
Right. But this could kick it over the top and make it happen.
But no, no, I wanna make sure.
$100,000 in December of last year.
But this is separate from the ramp. That's what I'm trying to ask.
No, it's not separate. This is a ramp.
Nobody knows, and yet we're applying for it, and it's a match. So we could be spending $350,000 on $125,000.
Do, is this separate from the ramp?
I, I have to look at the, I think I have a sheet here with the, with the budget. And I have to tell you, I did not, I did not prepare the Downtown Revitalization Initiative. But this new budget estimate, the idea would be to build, to build the ramp and...
Is budget in?
And so, so the, and of course, the grant is a matching grant. For Hudson, it's seventy-five, twenty-five, because meet some of the criteria for poverty census tracts. And there are some other, here are some intended enhancements, but I don't see the... I, I thought I had the budget sheets printed separately. I'm gonna make sure that everybody has that sheet. I'm gonna look before I go, make sure it's not in that folder. And I would add, by the way, just, just as an overview, that no council resolution is required for, to make application. The council would, would be required to pass a resolution to accept the funding, should they be awarded. So in the interim, I was going to ask the council for a resolution just in support of the project. And I certainly will get all of your questions answered and send, send those, that documentation along with a proposed resolution of support that really would not be committing the city to the funding, but just making the application.
No, I don't think you're committed to the funding. This is dated today. Why? Why wasn't the work done upfront? How come you don't know that this body has appropriated $120,000 for this project? How come when we ask a simple question here, we get two different answers?
I do remember, I do remember the money being appropriated and on a couple of different occasions with, with respect to the ramp and a couple of different designs going forward. I thought that the, the money had not been spent yet.
That's correct.
And that, that we certainly could use it for a match if we had, if we had had a successful application.
We could use the manpower as a match, couldn't we?
In part. It's a seventy-five, twenty-five match.
I get no sense of commitment. I get no sense of planning. I get no sense of any concept here, except let's do something and get it done today. Stated today. And, and it's all of two paragraphs, not quite a full page. Actually, it's about a half a page long, with nothing behind it.
No, I'm sorry, and I, um... I don't want to lay this off on anyone else, and I'm not going to. I should have gotten more materials in advance. I wasn't even going to be at this meeting, frankly, until, until today.
Right, my point. My point, sir. That's all. Well, this is all, this is, this is so skin in your teeth, so seed in your pants. So, well, here's something, look, work. We wrote this. It doesn't fly. It doesn't fly.
I understand that, what you're saying. With, with just one exception. At Economic Development Committee meetings, I did say we would be ready until, until the application went in to formulate and pick our best projects based on the DRI. But I don't have that, that background information for you right now. And I certainly will, will be supplying it if you, if you decide that you want to go forward. Because I would be requesting a resolution just in support of the application, and I'll get your questions answered.
When is this application due?
End of the month, twenty eighth.
What is, what is the LWRP portion? I don't have the handout because I gave it to everybody else. But what is the LWRP portion?
Also, also as, as part of the, as part of the Downtown Revitalization Initiative, there, there was an application as part of the Downtown Revitalization included really some connections, even though the Ferry Street Bridge, I think, is going to be replaced underway. We're talking about circulation and access to the waterfront as part of the, as part of the application under the LWRP.
Under our LWRP that's non-existent?
Well, it's under the, it's under the Department of State LWRP application. So those are the two projects that I was recommending going forward.
I'm sorry?
John thinks that it exists and has used it as an example of a comprehensive plan.
Well, LWRP does exist. It hasn't been enacted by the, by the Department of State, so you don't go to the front line for LWRP grants. But the LWRP was stupidly adopted by the city after thirty years of extrusion.
I don't disagree. Don't point at me.
We actually asked... We actually asked Department of State with respect to future grant applications and the impact of the status of the LWRP. And we were advised, and I think it's on their frequently asked questions page, that that's not problematic for the city of Hudson.
Okay, any other questions?
I couldn't be more confused.
I've been trying to get the DRI application from Sheena for, well, since it was submitted. And it's because financial information from businesses has to be redacted and various other reasons, it has not been made public. Does anyone on the council know what's, what's in that application? That, that, I mean, this is, these two applications are clearly things that have been extracted from that. But has anybody seen the document from which it's extracted?
I've seen it, but I've heard...
I think there are two. I would, I would, I would select those, those two components. Make sure that none of that information that you alluded to is in there. I'll forward that to the, to the council with, in addition to any other questions.
Carol, I don't think anyone's seen it. I think Cheryl, I mean, the mayor and Sheena, probably.
I, I, I have a copy now. Well, I only, I only got it, I only got it today.
Could be a week ago.
Any other questions? Now, this is due the end of the month, right? You don't need us to pass a resolution to submit for these two grants? Is that what you just said?
It's not, it's not a condition of the, of the grant application, but I think that there should be. Certainly, if there's no council support, it doesn't make any sense to apply for those things. And also, the resolution would demonstrate what they like to call community support.
I don't think it's a matter of support or not support. I think it's just a matter of a high level of confusion. Specifically, starting out with, with what appears to be a ramp that we've already agreed to pay for. We have some additional funding that we're trying to come up with. I think the mayor's working on that.
Well, do you even know what?
But we've already, but we've approved $120,000 of that already. So it seems, my gut says that that's probably very similar as to the two hundred, $100,000 to $200,000 for the LWRP. That may make all the sense in the world, but that's part of a bigger plan. And none of us have seen that DRI. And we don't know if those are the two perfect things to extract from that or pull from that. So it's confusion. It's not, it's not support.
Do you have a special meeting? We can show the council what's on that, so we can choose if these are the two where we would like to support?
That project is a deep part of the DRI application.
Since it's due?
I have to take your word on it. I don't have it in front of me.
I understand.
Well, I mean, if it's... Well, I mean, we could probably call for a special meeting to, to see the document. Yes. And I don't see why not. Thank you.
I like to keep in, ask for a special meeting. That's, that's great. And I want to say that I'm in with confusion at the time. Especially Mayor Office making a confession. Mayor was convicted by day by day, day by day, day by month by month. Like, he'll be doing, he'll be finding the money. He'll be doing spring, he'll be starting, yeah, three years ago. That's Mayor Office does it. I had a, about the plan, that plan about meeting with the mayor a couple of times. He says, "Oh, good, definitely Mr. Harris speaking, definitely that." She had no plan. She had no plan to pay them. That's the last two Mayor Office planned, that, that, that plan. Last two, well, three times. See, they had no plan to do that. They make it every time, and it screws and screws and delay and delay.
For the additional money for the rent?
Right. They, they constantly say, "Oh, I find you the money." We'll be starting spring, spring down, summer over gone. I don't know, after gone. She does it much like that. She make it, the Mayor Office is the responsible for that. Everything making like a, this kind of situation. She had no clear plan. She had no clear plan. Doing, wanted to do something. That's what the Mayor Office does it. I don't know, I know, I don't want to say make it up. She gone, she, she don't care that about the people. That's the problem was the time. She was the problem, she's a couple of times, me, keeping everybody. Thank you.
Well, to being that there is confusion, and not just amongst the council, but amongst our constituents that constantly ask, "What is the status of the ramp?" And Michael Oldham and O'Hara and myself has been working on a resolution on behalf of the council to ask the mayor to present to us an update.
Right, a report, a written report that would say where we're at and where's the, where would we like to go. So I, I think it's a reasonable request. Because the bits and pieces that have been assembled through text messages and phone calls and interviews are not available to everybody who wasn't in on those messages. And I, I think we, we, we need, we need some clarity in that regard.
Well, I think, I think, well, we certainly can't hold a special meeting before next Tuesday. But, but sometime between now and the end of the month and application time. time would certainly be the right time to do it.
Is it possible that we could request that Sheena can come to the next meeting and possibly provide us with a redacted copy of the DRI that we can look at versus our consultants having to do that outside?
Yes.
And then maybe could answer these two relatively easy questions.
Alvin, I'm going to be providing via email tomorrow a lot of this information.
Well, I would check with Sheena and the mayor, I mean, I have no idea, but I would think that that could come from them to us, their city officials.
Very well. I can do that.
Any other business from the council?
You know, that last conference meeting, there have been so many emergency inbound to be one hundred eighty miles. I know somebody who worked in Portugal, in my office, William Shannon, living down in Toronto. I never know who, I never talked with him, I never did that. I say, I will be, I will give you that, and I never told her. There have been seriously so many emergency, so many, so like that, she with the car in the two thirty-one calling this thing. I told my neighbor, like, I told that, it took a while, even the my nephew and other house, they, or they probably the other side, that's nothing to do with me and Sheena. So, they two was the car was the two, two thirty-six in the morning. So, that's Mayor Office try to blame somebody always, something. That's the document, I can tell it, I should not pay this money, city. If you have any complaint, I take responsibility to pay that money, if I'm, I'm the, I'm, I'm, if I'm doing something. Now, don't pay the city money, I don't know, because that's not true, and it's not a per cent cell. And I don't know how come the council president come to that, give, give not check the fact, what happened, who is the contact with them, come the council. So, this is my question, don't pay any money if, call that Uniam Shannon, who you are, contact with me, I'll be handling personally, they, who with it, when I told them, that's my question. This is the report, comfortable with department? So, so it is Mayor Office someone that making a confession, I know that. So, I don't blame her anymore, she here, phone over there. So, always something does to, God's love and this part, Mayor Office do something, do this, do this like that. I don't want to go before she go, she doing all the time last two years like that. Thank you.
Was that resolved, you know?
No, don't pay the money, don't pay.
Was all the money not?
No, I told them, don't pay, I have to give the last.
Outside of our weekend.
Yes. Don't pay the money, I don't want to pay the money anymore, like that.
Well, we already paid.
No, I told the last, last, last council, don't pay, I'll be, we can.
Specifically with that one gentleman, I assume that's what you're.
We paid like five out of six or something like that.
Yeah, we paid about five, four, six.
No, we, we.
Not we, not us.
We did.
Those two departments, yeah.
So, I, I, last, last time I told him, I will make it for next week, next time council meeting, I go to investigation, political, I talk to them, I definitely question, and then I don't know, and I asked for the telephone number, they cannot provide me either.
Can I interrupt, does anybody here speak with Mr. Shannon? I did.
But you did.
I did.
Okay.
He did not speak to Abbot, so I think that's what you're saying, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and, yeah, he didn't speak to Abbot. He said he followed what everybody else had done. Whoever they had spoken to is a secondary conversation to this one, and we don't need to have that. They've already been compensated via DPW and HPD. I inquire, I told Mr. Shannon to follow up with those, either of those departments, just like he had been one of those other five or six people, and I think we're going to just let this one take care of itself.
Thank you. Any other, any other business from the council?
I told him, no, I don't know.
Yeah, you didn't.
Public, any public?
I took some time to think about what I got to say. Last week, my church was deeded a building, okay, that had been foreclosed on by the city, and we hold the deed now, and I'm asking for direction as to how I might go about taking ownership.
You were, you were deeded?
Yes.
Or somebody doesn't own the building?
At this point in time, okay.
Because, because, because of the foreclosure.
Foreclosure, yes.
What has the city told you so far? The treasurer, I think you've had a conversation with our treasurer?
Uh, we really haven't really had too much of a talk.
So, there's been no communication with the mayor?
Other than, other than right now, for the two parcels, it's thirty-four thousand dollars, and at now, it's in limbo for a month, where the owner has the right to pay that whatever money it is and reclaim the building. Okay, we have stepped into the footsteps of that owner.
No, not for that purpose you haven't.
Okay, what, could you, that's why I'm here, I want you.
I don't think you have, you know, I mean, I think you're too late. The, the redemption law was written in nineteen, in two thousand eleven or twelve to permit the owner that loses the building to redeem it. If they want to redeem it and then sell it to you, fine, but you can't redeem it any more than I can redeem it. We're all arms length here as to the owner, former owner, current owner is the city of Hudson. The deed you have is from the former owner. I think if the former owner wants you to have the building, then they have to redeem it and then sell it to you. They can sell to you for a dollar, they can sell to you for nothing, that's up to them.
They skip that, and they slowly towards where now.
But they don't own it anymore. So, they can't sell it to you, that's the problem. And, and the law as it was written was to benefit the owner that loses the property, not the person who wants to buy it. Person who wants to buy it is like everybody else whose arms length to the former owner. They can now buy the building at auction. That's the law, the city of Hudson requires it to be that way.
Okay, because we have been writing it for eight years.
Right, and winters, winters are different, and, and, you know, the owner should have been in front with you or about this, the condition, the state of their title, and that it was in jeopardy, and if they had no interest in, in making good on the taxes, they should have offered you an opportunity to do it. They didn't, and, and they ignored all the, all the notices from the city. The city bends over backwards before it takes property from an owner. I think we sent out something like three or four notices over a number of years, and it takes three years to even get into the pipeline, and then almost another year before the foreclosure process is done. And throughout that entire period, the city stands ready, willing, and able to negotiate a settlement agreement with that delinquent owner. They, they didn't do any of those things, and you're in a bad position, but you're in a bad position that the city didn't put you in.
I understand that, can the city help me get out of that position?
I don't think so.
So, Alvin, for me, is it, so would you say for clarification, the owner, current owner of the Masonic Lodge can actually pay the taxes in full and then turn around?
The former owner.
The former owner.
Can.
They can steal.
The building within thirty days of the foreclosure. And, and the city undertook that really at, at, at great potential cost to the city because it creates a contingent liability on the city's part, when a piece of property that is in the process of now preparing for auction, preparing to auction off, could suddenly be taken out from under, when the city's already spent money on title and the foreclosure process and trying to get the taxes, and remember, the city's paid the county taxes and all the school taxes on that property. We always do, so the city is significantly out of pocket on that property, like any other property that gets foreclosed. The, the redemption law was passed in the wake of the two thousand eight recession because so many properties were falling into foreclosure through tax due to delinquent taxes, and the common council at the time, and the city at the time, and I don't think anything has necessarily changed, because I'm, that, that law still stands, created a, a last ditch short circuit, and that short circuit permits the former owner, not a third party, and it's always, it's been illegal in New York State for years to redeem other people's taxes, because people used to buy, pick up on their neighbor's property when they would go a few days late on their taxes. That was maybe legal years ago. This is not much different, and I think that, you know, there's, there's a solution. The solution is that the Masonic Lodge redeems the property and then turns around and deeds it over to you. At the time that they get the deed back, then the deed to you would be good. Unless there's a, right, unless something happens, after thirty days lapses.
What would happen?
Then it would go to auction.
Well, you have until the auction date itself.
Right, but there's nothing to keep you from, from buying it at auction.
When, when is the auction date?
There's no, nothing's been scheduled, tentatively for three months from now.
Pardon?
Nothing's been scheduled, but the process would, would dictate at least three months from now, if everything was fast.
So, so that's the only option right now?
Because.
For them to, to replenish the property?
Well, the, the owner would have to come with the, with the money that's due, the taxes and all the expenses that were incurred to.
They had entered into a payment, agreement months ago, but they had defaulted on that agreement and never started those payments, I can believe. I could be incorrect, but I believe they had.
That's maybe my next question, could there be a, a payment agreement in place to deduct that?
I think it already was attempted.
Apparently, they, they had attempted that, but that. Who, who was reaching out to these people?
City attorney.
City attorney and.
The treasurer's office.
Ma'am, ma'am, I, I, I've been at two or three meetings along with, with my son,
okay, with the treasurer, okay. I kind of walked out of there not knowing what was going on, but somewhere I was told that there was a possibility that if we could put down a down payment, we possibly could set up a payment plan.
It's not, it's not, it's not your responsibility to be there, and it's not, at this point, it's not your option.
And I don't think, I don't think, I don't know why the city would enter into another payment plan with a party that's already just recently defaulted on the last one. But, you know, that's.
When did they stop making payments?
They never started.
I know, we would need the treasurer and possibly the city attorney here to answer that, because I know they've both been involved in this, and it's unfortunate, the whole thing is.
Well.
Have you spoken to the previous owner about whether they're willing to redeem it?
Uh, no, I was, the last time I met with them, they were signing the building over to us.
And that just happened last week after all this kind of started.
Well, we had been, well, not really, because we had been in the midst of it for the last two years, being misdirected, and all of a sudden, somewhere along the line, somebody said, go ahead and do this, we went ahead and did it, and we, in two weeks, we had something done that hadn't, we couldn't have done in three years, you know.
So, sir, could we ask Heather to be at our next meeting, please, to give us an update on what exactly has transpired?
Well, you'll have your attorney here.
And maybe Kim, I mean, he's a little involved in that.
I wasn't looking for a decision right, right now.
We seem to be interested in what's happening.
You need to clear it up. Clear it up, and you know how to move forward with this situation.
I have to tell you, one of the worst sights I saw was going to my church and seeing padlocks on the doors and saying, no trespassing. Okay, that, that, that hurt me, that cut me to the quick.
Sure was quite a big surprise, and I'm really sorry this has all happened, you know.
But it also means that your landlord wasn't being straight up.
Well, we told him.
Honest with you.
Well, like I say, we've been working at this, we moved in eight, eight years ago, and we've been trying to get something set up. One of the problems is there are so few landlords, there are only about five members in that whole organization, and they're spread out, okay? And one person didn't want to take the responsibility for the other five.
We have, we have a finance meeting next week at five thirty, before the formal council meeting.
Five thirty.
And we could, we could, we could, Heather will be here.
Okay.
And that would be probably the best opportunity to talk about this, and if, and if need be, if it needs to carry over into the formal meeting, when our legal counsel is here, that, that's another thing, but I think to start at the finance meeting next week, five thirty, Tuesday, five thirty, Heather will be here, and, and she could explain how the process worked and where it is in relation to your landlord and, and you.
Like, I'm just here planting the seed, okay?
But that, but let's start, let's start with next Tuesday at five thirty.
Tuesday at five thirty, thank you.
Thank you.
Since we're, we're talking about taxes, I did receive a phone call, like, I've come up here several times, I, I haven't heard any details, but I'm sure maybe some of you who are on finance about the details about the three churches and their back taxes. We're talking about padlocks on churches, and I would say, hate to see, you know, those properties foreclosed on, especially since, you know, the city has actually admitted the fact that the mistake was initially made by a previous assessor who's no longer here. So, I'm just trying to figure out.
The mistake was made by the three churches that filed the formal order.
That's, that's not how it was reported, basically reporting what was reported.
I, I just want to piggyback with.
What Billy said.
But, and that being said, the, you know, I do know language was sent up to the state, and it was sent up there, and it had improper information, and I was certainly not pointing a finger, a finger at anyone, other than, I don't know how the information was improper, but there certainly wasn't any notice that came back to either one of the churches saying that the information was improper and that they still were under that foreclosure order. And I've talked to all the churches, and, and, you know, they're kind of confused and com, you know, perplexed by what's going on. I know the treasurer is working on this, but there certainly needs to be clarity where the churches stand, where these taxes stand, and what the process would be, so that they can again be forgiven.
Why should they be forgiven? They made a mistake.
They did make a mistake, sir.
You know, well, actually, sir, the way it's consistently reported here, I'm sorry, the way it's been consistently reported here, in the finance committee.
Okay.
Is that they were, they were late, they were late submitting their form eight forty.
First of all.
Then, I'm not done, I'm actually not done. They then asked this council, a previous council, actually, to support a resolution to the assembly to begin the process of fixing that, and we did. Then the assembly got the years long and passed the law that forgave them for years when they'd actually met their obligations. So, the, the problem is not here, the problem's in Albany or in the churches.
So, so now, now that you have clarified that point, let me clarify this point. Prior to all of that, and prior to you becoming Alderman, it was the assessor who failed to actually send them a form and then claimed that they were late, so they never received this.
They're not required, the assessor doesn't send the form.
Well, yes, to actually, see, that's where we wrong, because prior to that, the assessor was sending out the forms, who was Kim Singletary, she was sending out the forms to all the churches. When the new assessor came, he decided that, obviously, that he was no longer going to carry on that duty. Well, the churches didn't know that.
It's not a duty, Reverend Singletary decided to do it under her.
Well, she did.
She did it, and.
But she wasn't required to.
But she was.
The only requirement, the only requirement is for the churches.
These churches who are supposed to be nonprofit organizations are stuck with, well, they're stuck with tens of thousands of dollars worth of bills.
Because they forgot to file due something.
Well, if, if, if the control, I want, the assessor who came in and was replacing them was going to give them some assistance, just because it wasn't the owner, the owners wasn't on Kim Singletary, does not mean that this, the current assessor who came in should have ignored it. He know, he knows the paper wasn't there, so he should have notified them, I mean.
Why, it's not his obligation.
We're talking about taxpayers, do we, are we not here to serve the people? We're talking about taxpayers, do we, are we not here to serve the people or are we here to just serve ourselves?
No, we're here to serve the people, but all the people, not just members of the church.
Then he should at least reach the arm.
No, no. You cannot put the onus for a mistake on somebody else.
On humanistic ability, that's what I'm putting it on.
I'll put it on the church office.
Okay, well, you may be a non-believer, I'm not, sir.
Doesn't matter.
I didn't run.
Doesn't matter, hold on, you're going to do what you're supposed to do or you don't, if you don't, you take your day.
Supposed to do, if the assessor had any heart or any.
It's not a bad.
He would have put, he would have sent it out and it didn't happen. And I heard the administrators in the city. Well, no, it's not my fault, I'm not on the church.
Billy made a point, thank you. Abduz?
I don't want to, I'm with a Catholic influence. Since nineteen ninety seven, I wasn't a Catholic church. So every year, they used to send the, the, one of the non-profit organizations, they send to every church. I, I also slum sent a letter. And you'll be checked, the maximum was, was, I was it signed by me because they send it to our, our church. So a couple of years, suddenly, suddenly, uh, then in a certain, we don't know. I come a large day to fight, I remember that. I come a large day to fight. And that time was a rip, was it, I don't know. So they helped me out there, or the, coming to the, to the large day to fight to the process. This is, this is the happen. If you only doing practice, sending to the old churches, suddenly you don't send it to somebody else. It's not a full obligation or not, you serve the people. So you have to notify the people, we are not serving.
That's my point, it's the law, you have notice of it. You have an obligation, if you want to, or an obligation to follow one piece of paper, one sheet of paper, not two sides, one side, a piece of paper.
I understand.
The onus is.
I, I, no, no, I understand about owner for which I did, I'm desperate you, but, but you doing this practice, yes, yes, ten, fifteen years, twenty years. See, you doing that. You did not suddenly change it without notice anything? You can't. That is my point.
Okay.
This is not a question of law or not.
Of course it's a question of.
Definitely question of law.
But you cannot change the law, law for the people, nobody change the law. Law, I know that, law.
Rick, you had something you'd like to add?
You always changing the law. I can't think of any, yeah, I got it, I have a copy.
We need to adjourn.
Any, any other, any other, anything else this evening? Okay, before we adjourn, please, oh, Nick.
Just one quick thing, uh, to parallel what Carol said earlier, is I would really love to see the DRI. Just because I partook in all of the different things that took place, I'm pretty sure my name is on it as a stakeholder. And I was told after one of the meetings here that I was actually promised that we would get it the day before it was sent or the day of. And I realized that's hard to do because they're doing so much work. But now it's been like three weeks. And it just kind of seems to me like they're, I'm worried that more than just the numbers are being adapted. Because otherwise, you can just cross off the numbers, that should take a few minutes to do it. So I would really love to have some process where that's made public and explained exactly if they are taking out a lot of material, why they're taking out that material. Just get some more, some more from that, because that was, that was something that a lot of people, more than just me, were told we were all going to see. And we were told to trust it, there was going to be a transparent process, so, if that could be, and if the council could help with that at all, I would love that.
Well, the council just requested that we see it too, so.
But I'm just saying more than the council, I would love for the public and the people who participate to also see.
Well, everything that comes into this room is public.
Perfect, great, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I think it's complete aside, motion to adjourn, Henry, Abduz.